Ready for roll call?
Let's do it. Let's call this meeting to order.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here. All right, so welcome to our May 3, 2022 board meeting. First up, Dr. Hunt, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can introduce our star student.
All right, can I have Ellie Stutler come on up? I love the trunks.
Hi. Right there is perfect.
The flowers are spectacular.
So Ellie is a third grader at Lyons Elementary School, joined by, I think, Grandma and parents back there, as well as Dr. Heilberg. Ellie is described as a leader who is kind and supportive to her classmates. She has the patience of an adult, and she interacts so well with every student. She goes out of her way to say hello to students who need to hear it. She does a great job reporting student council news to her class and helps her classmates to get involved in whatever we are doing at Lyons. She's a very kind person who sees what needs to be done and does it without being asked. For example, she stacks everyone's chairs at the end of the day for them. She plays travel soccer while managing extended classes. She puts a lot of pressure on herself to be the best version of herself. She's inspiring, and she is really going to go places. So Ellie, congratulations. Let's give Ellie a big round of applause. Third grade. So we're going to ask everyone to stand.
And then Ellie, you start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You want us to come around, Sam?
Yeah.
Come around. Stay right there, we're coming to you.
Let's do two rows, guys. Put the tallest people in the back.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
One more, did you want to get one back there?
Oh, I mean, I'd love to. It doesn't work here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Good work.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your patience, as we had a little bit longer than expected closed session this evening. Next up on the agenda is our report by Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Spring sports and clubs are off to a really great start and doing relatively well. The BHS Fine Arts put on a great show, James and the Giant Peach, this past weekend, which showcased a lot of their hard work and talent. For teacher appreciation this week, student council, as well as many other clubs, planned lunches, and other events to recognize our awesome teachers at BHS. AP tests started this week, so many BHS students are able to demonstrate all of the learning that they've done this year. Finally, junior class board has worked really hard the past few months to plan prom, which is May 14. So students are really looking forward to this fun event. And then, this is Olivia. We've actually known each other since we were two, so I'm really excited to give this position to her, and I know she's going to be awesome next year.
Hello, everybody. My name's Olivia Felfley. I am a sophomore at Barrington High School. I'm involved in softball, student council, and reality council, and I'm happy to be here tonight.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Well, Sarah, before you walk it too far, the board has appreciated your service and hearing from you and getting updates about the high school, and so we have a little parting gift for you. From the Board of Education. Woo, it's kind of heavy. So does anybody want to have any closing remarks for Sarah?
Good luck on the senior year.
Yes.
A lot of exciting things happen next year, you know. That's great.
It was great having your energy here, bringing us all the stories from the high school, making us remember what it's like to be in high school, not really, but, you know, trying to live vicariously through your stories. So we thank you for a really good job.
Yes, I really enjoyed it.
I enjoyed very early on getting to know Sarah as I was throwing out 911 calls for babysitters when we first arrived. And I will tell you, she is everything she appears to be. She's just an upstanding young lady who is motivated and does a lot of really wonderful things, great person, and I know you're going to do great things. So congratulations to you, and thank you during a crazy senior year, making time to be here and share a student perspective with the Board of Education.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
Are you still playing? I think you showed up in a soccer uniform one day. Are you still playing?
Yes, soccer, yep.
Awesome, best wishes on that. Yes, thank you so much for coming to visit us so often. I really enjoyed it.
All right, a little round of applause.
Okay, next.
Teacher, this is the time to slide.
You're welcome, stick around.
I also wanted to comment that James and the Giant Peach was amazing, and Paul Leah's son was fantastic, and it was so fun to see. I think, like, at least half the audience must have been our elementary school kids, so having that exposure to theater, to our high school kids, doing theater and doing kind of set design and music, I think it was really cool to see that engagement.
Excellent. All right, so next up is my report, and actually I have a bit of a long one today, so I'll try to make it a little bit shorter. There's been some good activities. So first, I just want to thank again the community members, the board members, and the staff who participated in Framework 220 Summit last week. I know Dr. Hunt's going to give a more thorough report, and I'm sure Lee and Steve are going to want to comment as well. I heard about the good, robust discussions, but just thank everyone again for their dedication to Barrington 220. It's very much appreciated. Last month, several board presidents attended a meeting with the executive director of IASB, Tom Bertrand, where we discussed the changes in the resolution process. So you all received an email, I think it was last week or the week before, about the resolutions for the fall. Everybody knows we talk about those resolutions every spring, and we act upon them, but if you notice in the email, there's been some changes. So in January, there was a review committee that was established by the IASB Board of Directors, and that review committee made several recommendations to strengthen the resolutions process, including procedural changes, administrative rules for the resolutions committee, and that review committee made the recommendation to the board of directors. The board of directors hence since then approved them. So the board of directors wants to make sure that our resolutions are focused on advocacy on a limited number of issues that are most impactful to the membership and that unite the membership with a clear consensus, and that the position of the Association for Legislative Success on behalf of its members. You guys can read through that email, but just very quickly, some of those core values that they talked about are, want to make sure that resolutions support locally elected, nonpartisan, and volunteer school members in providing excellence in local school board governance, based on the association's foundational principles of effective governance. They want to make sure the resolutions support and protect adequate and equitable funding necessary to provide all students with success and excellent public education. They promote excellence in student achievement for all Illinois students and a fair accountability for academic progress. That the resolutions advocate for legislation that supports the physical and emotional well-being of students and staff, and support safe and secure learning environment for all, and they support the association's commitment to education, and promote nonpartisan member engagement and provide the tools to enhance advocacy efforts. So I just want to make sure that you guys noticed that difference. And all that being said, we talked about this a little bit last year, and there was even some desire for us to write a resolution, but in that email, it also said that the deadline is June 22. So if we'd like to write a resolution, if someone has a strong desire, we need to organize pretty quickly. So if you've got an idea for a resolution, please let me know, and we can maybe bring forward into an upcoming board agenda. If you think about it even during the meeting, you've got something, I don't want to say we can't write one up, but we just have to move quickly. So if you've got some ideas, let me know. Also, we learned that there are going to be some proposed changes to the IASB constitution that will be voted on this fall at the conference, so stay tuned for more information on that. Also, last week, all the large districts across the state do gather, and we gather about once a quarter, and we shared our stories and our journeys regarding equity, and we all agreed that it is a journey, not necessarily a destination. Many of the districts are on similar paths as ours, involving staff and students and community organizations and community members, and thoughtful decisions with data were very much a common theme across all the districts. At the next meeting, next quarter, we requested to have a discussion on school board members, on the election that's coming up, right? So the IASB typically holds a workshop after petitions are signed and submitted, and we asked that they consider doing something before so that community members can get a better idea on what they might be signing up for. So very interested in even what some newer board members might have to say, or might want to make sure it gets shared. So if any of the newer board members or any board members wants to give some feedback there, I can make sure you get the right connection, or make sure I bring forward whatever you guys want. That'll be our discussion at the next meeting. I don't even have a date for it yet, but it'll probably be in a couple of months. I'm still not done. Graduation, Janine sent us all an email. We should let Janine know about BHS graduation on Friday, June 2nd or 3rd. We need to know by Friday if you're going to be participating in the ceremony. It's really important that we get back to Janine on this, because there's a lot of planning that goes into that. So if you could please do so, that would be great. On our June 7 board meeting, we are going to start about 30 minutes earlier and close at 5:00 p.m., so let us know if you've got any conflicts with that. We'll be discussing Dr. Hunt's annual review and reviewing his goals for the coming school year. Okay? What did you say to Sandra?
June 7.
Oh, June 7. Okay, yeah. So we'll start a little bit earlier. Week. So we all have a little something prepared. So Katie, would you like to start us off?
Oh, yes. Okay, so we were asked to find perhaps a little quote or something. So I'm going to start out by saying I'm very aware that our teachers can spend more time with our children than we do many days. So the quote I found was from Lily Tomlin, "I like a teacher who gives you something to take home to think about besides homework." And I will say, my favorite time of the day is at night, sitting around the dinner table, and my children always come home with a story from school, or from their teacher, or what they're doing in their classrooms, and it's not really ever about the homework, it's about what they, an idea, or a thought, or something that they took away from that day, and I'm so appreciative of that from our teachers and what they're instilling in our children. So, thank you.
So happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and I definitely, after the last two-plus years, have a much deeper well of appreciation, even though I appreciated you all before as teachers, but it's something I'm completely sure that I cannot do. But, so thank you. Thank you for all of the investment and energy and just positive impact you make in the lives of our students here in 220. So thank you so much. I actually pulled a quote from Alala Youssef-Sai, who many of you probably remember that 10 years ago, she was shot by the Taliban because she has been and continues to be a huge advocate for education, and especially making sure that girls receive a comprehensive education. And she has said, "Let us remember, one book, one pen, one child, and one teacher can change the world." And I think that's super true. I remember every single one of my teachers and the impact they made, I think from pre-kindergarten through college, and our son and our daughter are the same way, when they come home too, like filled with stories about what they learned and what they did, and what they learned from each of their teachers, and it's so gratifying to hear that. So thank you for all your energy and investment. So I found a quote from Todd Whitaker, who coaches educators, and so I learned something. "The best thing about being a teacher is that it matters. The hardest thing about being a teacher is that it matters every day." So thank you, especially this year, to all of our teachers, because this is, you know, every day is a lot this year. It's more than a normal year. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
All right, Barry?
Okay. First, I want to say Barrington has educated all five of my kids. They are out in the world, and we couldn't have done it without the teachers that molded them into the adults that they are. So I'm so appreciative. I'm sad that some of the teachers are retiring or have retired, because it's been, boy, about 20 years since my son started as a kindergartner at North Barrington. So my quote is from Fred Rogers. "Where would any of us be without teachers, without people who have passion for their art, or their science, or their craft, and love it right in front of us? What would any of us do without teachers passing on to us what they know is essential about life?" I always had a soft spot for Mr. Rogers. But thank you to all the teachers, and we appreciate you very much.
I agree, especially with Mr. Rogers. My dad was a high school English teacher, made a very big difference in so many kids' lives, which I didn't even realize until his funeral, when we had so many of his former students come and pay their respects, and give my mom such nice cards, and discussions about, you know, how he really made a difference in their lives, and it does, it just takes one person. I have a quote here from Sidney Hook, "Everyone who remembers his education remembers teachers, not methods and techniques. The teacher is the heart of the educational system." And I can remember when I was running for the Board of Education two times now, at some point in some debate, I did a little poll of the room, you know, who remembers their third grade teacher, and, you know, everyone throws out their name, and you do, it's those benchmarks where, you know, maybe you don't remember what movie you went to when you were seven, but you definitely remember who taught you how to tie your shoes, and you definitely remember the first time you got all your multiplication tables right, and who that teacher was. So, yeah, just glad that there is a week set aside to specifically thank you for a job that should be thanked every day. Hopefully, it is.
Yeah, no, that's awesome. Like many, my family and I moved here to Barrington because of the educational system. And, you know, granted, I'm very young in our journey here through D-220. My daughter was in kindergarten two years ago, she's in second grade now, but I will say that, you know, without a doubt, our experience has been first-class, and we have nothing but positive things to say about the district. You know, for just over the last two years, even in these difficult times, and with, you know, less than, you know, ideal circumstances for educational purposes, my daughter has flourished, and I know it's no small part due to the teaching and the infrastructure that we have here in D-220. And so, you know, I'm confident that with everything that teachers around here do, you know, the sky's the limit for her, and just like it is for the rest of the district. And, you know, a quote that I really like is, was said by John F. Kennedy at one point, and what he said, "Effort and courage are not enough without purpose and direction." And it's that direction and that, you know, identity that the teachers provide for our children is what's going to set them apart in this world and what's going to make them successful. And so for that, I have nothing but gratitude, and just privileged to be here. So thank you, and thank you for all that you do, and, you know, I echo what Angela said, I hope you guys hear that every single day, you deserve it.
I'm getting teary-eyed up here. So just thank you again. Okay, I'm going to cheat, and I'm going to use two, because I wanted to make sure I'm at last, because I have a couple. Just in case we had any duplicates. So Japanese proverb really rang true with me, too. "Better than a thousand days of diligent study is one day with a great teacher." So I think about that a lot with the teachers that I've been involved with, either through my board service or through my kids. Just really appreciate all the teachers. But I have to read one more. "I view education as the most important subject in which we people can be engaged in." And that was said by Abraham Lincoln. So thank you again, Barrington 220 teachers, for engaging our students in the most important Thank you very much. And all of the other parents and community members, please take a minute this week to appreciate our teachers.
Yeah, you're here.
So with that, I will conclude my report. Thank you all very much. And we're going to go a little bit different order today. The next thing we have is a special recommendation and action to consider the approval of Julia Fosillo as the student superintendent of Barrington 220 Schools for Thursday, May 5. Do we have a motion?
Go move.
All right.
Julia, can you step forward, please? So board, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Julia to you. She's a fourth grader in Ms. Frank's class at Huff Street School. She demonstrates the Huff pride board character traits on a daily basis. She's reflective, resourceful, creative, collaborative, and persistent. Julia's favorite part of the school day is writing. She also loves seeing her friends. Julia is ready to take on her responsibility as Barrington 220's superintendent. And maybe to give a little bit of history here, I had the pleasure of attending a fundraiser for Huff Street, and all of a sudden, I heard we were negotiating off or raffling off a student superintendent of the day. I am so very excited that if you approve, I will run you through the agenda and activities that Julia will partake in in leading our district on Thursday of this week. So I think we need to hold our breath. This is what superintendents do when they're getting recommended for a job. You hold your breath, and you hope that they vote yes. So if you approve, I'll go ahead and I'll give you the agenda.
Julia, he just wants the day off.
Shh, he's like, see right through me.
All right, shall we do a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Absolutely, yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes, absolutely.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Oh, yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
And can I get a raise?
Yes.
Starting already, Julia.
All right, so the motion passes unanimously. Please tell us more.
So on Thursday morning, we will start at Huff Street School, where she will record the Pledge of Allegiance and welcome the students, and we will make a few stops in classrooms on the way. What's not on the agenda is we will sit down with Mr. Ernst, and we'll talk about his performance as a student perspective. So that's on the agenda as well. We have a site review meeting in which we will go over the referendum construction project that will occur at Huff School, and you will help give some input into the planning of that site in preparation for construction. We're going to spend time with Dr. Byrne and talk a little bit about curriculum and get a student perspective into some of our curriculum initiatives in the district. We don't have any time for rest, because we then need to go to a referendum construction meeting, in which Julia will give input into the mural that will go up at Station Middle School? Station Middle School. So when she arrives there, you will have an opportunity to say, "I had a pardon putting that up." We will tour the executive office here. We will attend a principal meeting where she will speak, and she'll thank principals for all that they do. We will look at our future website rollout, and she'll give a student perspective on the website. Then, are you buying lunch?
She'll be the boss.
All right, that means you always pay if you're the boss. Lunch at Barrington High School, and we're going to take a few minutes to tour Barrington High School. And then, at the end, which is my favorite part of the week, is you will write a little blurb for the superintendent weekly report that goes to the board, talking about your experiences superintendent of the day. All right? You up for all that?
Awesome.
Sounds like a fun day. You'll be very busy. Are you excited?
I say skip all of this, and this guy needs to take you out for ice cream.
All right, we'll see. Steve, you got ice cream for the high school? All right, we got to cover.
All right, there you go. Excellent.
All right.
Please be very honest and let us know what you think of your day.
Have a fun day. All right, give her a big round of applause. Julia, come back.
Do we need to take a photo before we get started, too?
Should we do that? Yeah.
We won't have the whole board together. We're going to come out there and take a quick photo with you.
Yeah.
This is for you.
Is she going to need that for Thursday?
Well, she can choose to wear it or not. It's up to her. Holding decisions are part of being the superintendent.
Don't go so fast, it's part of being in this thing, you know, taking 400 photos. All right, one, two, three.
Win for mom, get ready.
Yeah, for daddy, he's not here. There you go.
Great job. See you Thursday.
You gotta go to sleep now, get ready for daddy.
Right. Thank you.
Dr. Anna Brosnan's fundraiser's next week, are you up for it?
You knew it was coming.
I'll have to check with Julia and see if I'm allowed to go.
You said a present. I'll be sending you one.
I know, I'm going to need nine years for the district, but you want a year.
Okay, so next is public comment. We've come to the portion of our meeting set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with board policy, we ask you to state your name, your elementary tenancy area, and your relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also are going to be limiting your comments to three minutes this evening. And we've got the countdown timer. Sure. We will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our board equity statement, which states that we recognize, embrace, and defend all identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. And per our board policy, the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. We are committed to addressing issues and not attacking people, and we ask the community to do likewise. If someone else has represented your views, please do not feel the need to repeat their comments. Instead, consider standing, showing your support. We ask that these actions do not delay or impede the public comment or the work of the board. As a reminder, public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. So with that, Monica Casey, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Monica Casey. I belong to the Grove Avenue Elementary District, and I have a sophomore in high school. I wanted to be here to share observations and some constructive comments from the Framework Summit this weekend. I wanted to first of all thank Dr. Hunt for putting it together, this great collaborative effort, and a lot of input from the community, and parents, and teachers, as well as administrators, and it's a valuable tool in planning the future for 220. So thank you. Having 17 years' experience in the district, there's certain things that we need to emphasize, and that's the strong reputation of academic excellence that no doubt is the primary reason people choose to live in Barrington. They pay high costs and have high expectations to access a superior level of education and activities for their families. Excellence sets a standard, and without any standards, we do not have anything to strive for or measure. The challenge is to maintain high expectations and be able to clearly demonstrate 220's performance among its competitive peer groups in the area that are also exceptional, and not simply make comparisons to state or national levels. In order for an award-winning strategy to succeed, very clear parameters need to be established, and future goals, the bar is always being raised. The central theme in discussion is also to achieve each student's unique educational potential. There's a unanimous agreement on the importance and focus on core academics, yet, in general, the proposed strategy vision seems to not reflect that enough. It's diminished by several soft topics, which many participants viewed as nonessential or distracting from core learning. Many of the descriptives or... Many of the descriptives or points specified in the learner profile, empathy, collaboration, advocacy, were individually highlighted, and yet, these are all terms that collectively represent excellent leadership qualities. These are skills which we all want our children to acquire. It is so important, especially in these times, that we develop strong leaders that have represented core moral and ethical values, and are critical thinkers that can collaborate and make decisions based on facts. These are certain topics that are soft and subjective. So the question is, how much time will be dedicated? What data and methods will be used to measure, to address these topics outside of core learning? And how can you accurately evaluate these soft traits effectively? Primary concern voiced was that as more emphasis is placed on these soft topics, the more they will be and ultimately distract and pull teachers away from the primary role of core education. Please consider these points from your audience and the community as we continue our collaborative efforts in making our district the standout that we all want it to be. We appreciate your time. Thanks.
Next up is Marsha McCleary.
I'm Marsha McCleary, and I'm in the countryside area. I have five kids, four in the district. Thank you so much for hosting and putting on a great strategic planning session, Dr. Hunt and team. It was outstanding to be included in this important initiative. I was raised in Barrington myself. I attended BHS and had several experiences now across Countryside, Station, and BHS. Also wanted to give a little perspective, given my strategic planning that I participated in my business career. One thing I've observed systemically is that people use words to describe Barrington as schools as award-winning, a destination district, best-in-class, world-class, and similar. And I've heard many of you say these things. In that being the case, one of the things I heard talked about on the meeting Saturday was, is that assumed? Or is that something we put into the strategy? In my experience, it's something we have to deliberately achieve, and we have to deliberately plan to achieve in the strategy itself. We can't just assume that it's there. And I personally didn't see that showing up in our language very strongly yet. So there's time. So that's important, I think, to be in the strategy and not just assumed. People come here for the high cost of living and tax burden in order to achieve a superior education, and whatever words we use to do that, I think it did show up in the ways. And one of the things we said overwhelmingly on all the charts was to achieve each student's unique educational potential and their best version of themselves, whether that be for college, trade, something else. But how do we offer them superior programming and all of those things? And I agree with what Monica said a little bit about, because I had two principals at my table, is how do we not get distracted with so many things? We have to choose things we're going to be the best at and really strive for those and not spread ourselves too thin. Because I think the two principals at my table, and I've heard other people say this, we're starting to get stretched in a lot of directions. So let's be deliberate about what we're going to be successful at, and put that in our strategy, and do it. And sometimes that means really saying no to certain things that we would like to do, but we just don't have time to do. And I agree also with consistently training outstanding leaders, whether that's the leadership of your own destiny and your own plans, or that's something in leadership for volunteering activities groups. We've trained mayors here. We have people coming out of the district that are leaders, and I feel like we should have some language around that in our community. And I really appreciate your time and thoughts, and I hope you all have a great weekend.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our public comment. Next up, Dr. Hunt, please give us your report.
Thank you. I guess, let me just speak quickly. We, we're going to address learner profile later, and I think the word specific to "yet" is really relevant right now, because we just kicked this process off, right? I think the district took a year and a half to go through the strategic planning process in 2009, and there are many steps to come as we go forward, and we look forward to continuing to engage and totally agree with the importance of strategy and being able to measure our, the things that we value and view as important are the things that we measure. So I think as this process evolves over time, and we get to, you know, the finalized plan, I hope that you will find that those things are present within the plan.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Sure, yeah.
It also wasn't completed in a short timeframe either, right? We implemented that strategic plan over more than a decade.
Right. Okay. Go ahead, thank you. So I, I know the, the board has all, you know, taken the time to acknowledge staff, and I, I think it's really important that I do the same. This is a week that is amazing for a lot of reasons. I'll deal with the community side first. I was able Monday morning to go to the ELC and look at the, the spread, if you will, provided by our PTO, and it just reminded me of, you know, how supportive this school district is of their schools and of their staff, and willing to step forward. And, you know, I, I know a bagel luncheon or a bagel breakfast doesn't, you know, capture everything, but if you look at all the support organizations that are out there that are willing to step up and help us innovate and, and move things forward, it really is a special part of our community that we need to continue to foster and grow. So thank you to all of our volunteers and everyone who's helped celebrate throughout the, throughout this week. In terms of staff specifically, I've had the opportunity with this series that we've, we've pushed out this year called Dr. Hunt Up Front, to sit down with teachers throughout this district and employees throughout this district. And as I was reflecting coming into this week, I thought about, there are themes that are emerging from every one of those videos. And first of all, undoubtedly, the employee talks about giving thanks to others. They, they have a hard time pushing themselves forward. They talk about their team. They talk about their support. They talk about working in Barrington. So they, they understand the importance of having a team approach to educating kids. There's no doubt that they care deeply about their students, and it is their number-one priority on every single day to build relationships, to connect, and continuously improve. And that they're also, they share passion. You can almost, it just exudes them. I don't know if it comes through in those videos, but by the time I walk out of there, I think I'm walking quicker, and I have more intent of what I'm doing, because these people have such passion for what they do. And I think our job administratively is to help support and, and allow them to, to be free to kind of pursue that passion. The other, the other thing that always happens after one of these videos go, that goes out, is I get emails back. And it's obviously people that are currently in the classroom will email, and they'll say, you know, "Thank you, you know, Mrs. Smith is wonderful, she does a great job." But what you may not know is, I get emails that, from students and from parents that had these individuals years and years ago, and it was a moment where they could reconnect and remember how special it was to be in their classroom. And this is, I only get to highlight nine during the year, but these are the type of individuals that are waiting for our kids every single day when they, when they walk into schools. And, you know, we talk about what makes us special, the relationships, the people that are standing in front of our kids, and they're working so hard to provide such a great educational experience every day is the reason why. So, thank you, Melissa. Please extend my gratitude to, to the staff, and thank you for everything that you do on a regular basis. I want to tell you the picture that was in the middle of this slide earlier today. Another picture of me, but I just...
Now you're going to have to show us.
Order, Ford.
I had the opportunity to speak at the White House on, I guess it was Thursday night. They're kind of blending together this week. But Barry, Leah, thank you for attending. Really, it was an opportunity to talk about education and focus on kind of the future. And I just wanted to take a moment to, to thank the White House for the invitation and thank them for providing a venue to kind of bring our community together and, and talk about schools. We talked about this at the Learning Summit as well. We need to understand that information can't just be one-way, can't just keep giving it out to our public, that we need to create environments in which we are dialoguing with our community about our schools. And this was an excellent opportunity for me to share a little bit about my thinking about where we're currently at with education, with students, and the needs that they faced, and a little bit about where we're going. So I just wanted to recognize and thank the White House, and they've been very open in, in inviting me back, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do that soon. So appreciate the, that opportunity. It was mentioned, we had our Framework 220 Summit, another, another opportunity to appreciate not only the community members that were willing to give up a Friday and a Saturday. When Craig and I first talked about what happened in the past, he said Friday and Saturday, and I said, "You've got to be kidding me. No one is going to show up." And then, you know, and I also, we, we wanted to make sure anybody who wanted to come was welcome and had a seat at the table. So I was shocked when I saw the response, and then I was even more shocked when I showed up and people were actually there. You know, and, and I mean that from a community perspective. I also mean it from a staff perspective on a, after a long week, giving, you know, another day and a half of your time. But the conversations were, I felt very productive. I think people were very honest in how they felt. I don't view this, and I tried to explain this to the group, I certainly didn't view this as we would show up on Friday and walk it out on Saturday and be done. But this was a start, and what you'll see kind of in, in the next few weeks is a continuation of the work, and that, that being the foundation of what we do. So tonight, we'll talk about the learner profile. We'll talk about the process we went through to get to where we are today with that, and ask the board for some feedback there. But this group really focused on a couple of things: mission, core beliefs, and strategic priorities. And a lot of really good work was done there. We're going to work on refining that and trying to come up with a draft. We're going to push that draft out to everyone who contributed and showed up at that meeting for additional feedback. Then, my, you know, I, I've coined the term now, we're going to take this thing on the road. We're scheduling up meetings out in the community where people, you know, throughout the community can come in, we can share that draft document, they can give us more input. And then, the goal would be to bring it to the board for input as well, as we're kind of moving through this process. And I know we've laid out a timeline for the board to try to get, you know, by the second meeting in June, mission, core beliefs, strategic priorities, and learner profile done. But again, I don't view that as an end. Once we have those priorities, we really need to sit down and talk about what's the work within there? What are, what are the measurable actions that are going to take place in the next one, two, three years? And what are we going to prioritize? Because, you know, we can't do everything all at once. Hopefully, this brings alignment, this brings focus, and brings energy and excitement to, to our schools in terms of what is the next iteration of Barrington 220. So just want to publicly thank everyone who contributed to that process as well. And I think that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Dr. Hunt, thanks so much for that summary. I don't want to be like a COVID downer, but I remember last time you mentioned pausing at some of our school buildings who, that had spikes. And I think right now they've gone down in some of the buildings, like, except for maybe Prairie and Grove, I think still has a good number of cases. Can you give us a little bit of an update about what's going on in terms of, I think what you had mentioned was pausing some of the lunchroom configurations for, for the buildings, but where are we now with?
So we, we continue to monitor those week by week. Number, if numbers are increasing, we, you know, we, we hold back on moving in that direction. I don't know if you meant pausing like pause the school.
Yeah, I meant pause, you, I think you had said you were going to pause.
Some of the lunchroom, yeah, some of the lunchroom transitions. I'd have to ask Craig, but I, I believe we're still paused in those buildings.
And the four that you had mentioned.
Monitoring those numbers. On the student side, I'm hoping we're seeing kind of the plateau, but, you know, it's still, you know, the, the numbers are still high, just being honest. And Frank, we are experiencing it on the staff side as well. Trying to sub, our teachers are stepping up, and they're continuing to help out where they can. We, we, we continue to see spread and impact, both with, you know, their, their own personal children and their own illness. So it's, it's something we balance every single day and we continue to work with.
We are monitoring things every day. I know that we're regularly updating, right? Just so our community's assured.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Is there a timeframe to, do you have a threshold with, I've been asked when lunchrooms are returning at, say Prairie or any of those schools?
I think we, once we confidently see the numbers start to decline, I don't, yeah, I'll, I'll move in that, we'll move in that direction. The other thing I probably should mention, you know, we, Lake County kind of turned us over to Cook County's Health Department recently for any building that's in Cook County. Their recommendations, you know, regarding Grove specifically, we have followed, and we did increase testing to twice a week in those, in Grove Elementary specifically. So we are continuing to have dialogue with the Health Department.
Next up is informational reports. Any questions about the consolidated district plan that was presented?
Is that something that all districts do?
Yeah, I think the memo, it, we're required each year by law to bring this to the board to review and then vote upon, and, and to be, you know, to be clear, this is really an important piece of the federal grant process.
Right.
In terms of how we spend those dollars, and, and, you know, important that we improve this and move it into the consolidated.
So this is something we do every year, and this is pretty similar to last year.
Yeah, every year since 2019.
Yeah, in the past few years.
Since it's been part of the law. Right, just to explain it, that's...
Okay, let's move to...
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't, I wanted to wait for other people to go first, but I had a few things, or really quick things. Oh, sorry, I'm, we're at a board committee report or not there?
We're about to do board committee report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead.
So board committee report.
I'm so eager. I'll let someone else go first.
So Finance Committee met today, and it was a pretty short meeting, not a lot of business happening at the moment, which is okay. So we're going to move forward to the board to raise the breakfast and lunch prices at the schools by a tiny bit, 10 cents. They haven't been raised since the 2019, 2020 school year, and this is something that we do periodically to keep up with the costs and also to comply with, with the law as far as free and reduced, and also what our costs are, to keep it equitable. So that's something coming. And then, the other thing we got an update on is talk, we talked about the natural gas prices and how they look like they're increasing, and how our, our Finance Officer, Dr. Byrne, is going to keep us paying attention to that and see if there's anything we can do to...
Currently locked into a period of time, our, our natural gas is, well, both, natural gas and electric are locked through, into 2023. Natural gas, I believe, is April of '23, and electric is December of '23.
Maybe things will start coming down by then, we can hope. The optimist.
So, so the plan, right?
So, are you done, Leah?
Yeah.
Okay. Referendum Committee met on April 21st, and it's always positive because we're, we're on time and, and we're, you know, so far, you know, budget has been positive for us. So both Middle Schools and Grove are kind of at the finishing, the finish line. We can look forward to ribbon cutting sometime this summer because we're going to be able to move in with the start of the new school year. Interestingly, this summer, we're going to have eight buildings running simultaneously. So I give credit to, to all, all the people that are involved in organizing and getting all, getting all eight buildings going, which is just phenomenal. It's going to be a very busy summer. And then, just to kind of keep on the radar, Rose, North Barrington, Lines, and Early Learning Center, we're starting to get community involvement. You can expect, if you're in those schools, that at the end of the summer, we're going to be reaching out to you, because that's the last four that will be scheduled, and then we'll start on them next summer. Let's see. And again, just another thank you to friends of the field. We'll be talking about that a little bit later, but we're just kind of reimagining the field of dreams and site plans, and we're, you know, we definitely have more flexibility with the very generous donors that we've had. So we're excited. We're, we're making progress, and we're very excited.
It was interesting at the, being at Prairie with 110 community members and people who were all there, you know, there's always at the break a line in the ladies bathroom, and so everyone got to see the new improved bathrooms and how nice they looked. So, you know, it's nice, it's rolling through the district, the new bathrooms, so.
Excellent. Anything else?
Okay, I will go. I was just excited on behalf of the district equity team to wish you all Happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and especially my fellow AAPI board member, Steve over there. AAPI Board Member, Steve over there. Happy AAPI Month to you. I also wanted to say that, you know, I mentioned these months and how we celebrate them, but I think it's also about feeling seen. And I think for me, as someone who's both felt vulnerable and also immensely proud of being an Asian American woman, and also is part of a school district that is strengthened by students of all backgrounds, including our Asian American students, who now number about 1 in 6 students. I'm also really gratified to see that we're gonna be the first state in the country, starting this coming academic year, to integrate the Teach Act, which will incorporate a unit of Asian American history from grades K through 12. I know that some of us have had passing conversations, and, you know, more in-depth conversations, and I think over the next few years, it'll get implemented in different ways. And so, I'm excited to see how that plays out, because that's something that, other than, for me, initiating projects on Asian American history, I never really got taught until college. So, I think that this will be a big benefit, along with the history of, you know, members of, of, community members of all backgrounds in terms of narratives. And this is like in light of, you know, Stop API Hate has recorded more than 10,000 hate incidents against Asian Americans, actually more than 11,000 now, in the last two years. So, this is, I think, really important to make sure that every member of our community, especially our AAPI community, feels seen and valued, and that the history and narratives are also valued. So, happy to see that. And our District Equity Calendar at Barrington220.org/equity220 has been updated with a Happy AAPI Month announcement, but also a webinar on teaching Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage, and, you know, some stories about what it is to live as a Hawaiian, in terms of the Pacific Islander angle. So, you'll find some really interesting things there as well. Otherwise, I wanted to say that I went to the 50th Anniversary of the Ed Red Dinner with Dr. Hunt last Monday, and State Superintendent Carmen Ayala was there, and she gave a nice rundown. I took some notes, but she gave a rundown basically of a lot of things that ISB is offering, school districts across the state. And I'll try to, you know, I'll send Sandra some of the notes that I have with some website links that maybe you could send out to the board. That would be helpful. And our very own Penny Casimir appeared on video, too. I think Dr. Hunt got a picture, and she wished Ed Red a happy 50th, too. So, it was fun to see her, even through video. And also on Thursday, Steve was there, too, and Dr. Hunt and I went to the Barrington Chamber of Commerce Women's BizNet Scholarship Luncheon. And so, every year, they give scholarships to honor one, their former Communications Director, who passed when she was 29, Lauren of cancer. And so, it was really rewarding to see that, to one, to see the students, and I think almost all but one were BHS students, which was fun to see. But also, they each talked about their majors, and where they were going to college, and where they saw themselves in five years. And they totally blew me away, probably you, too, with their aspirations. I think it was a lot of biochemistry and entrepreneurship, and it was just really exciting to see and to be there. And the Biltmore hosted that, and KDA did not break into the tower. Apparently, that's closed. So, so, yeah, so that was, that's my update. Anything to add, Steve?
You covered it well. Thank you. And actually, Happy Asian Pacific Islander, I'll forward back at you.
All right.
Okay, any other updates? All right. So, do we have a, next up is a consent agenda. So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, and make sure you look at this revised personnel report. That's included. Also in the consent agenda, we have open and closed minutes from April 19th, and we have a finance report outlining the gifts by Bernadette Plakowski. So, thank you, Bernadette, for this, the cash donation that you were, you were able to make, and the revised personnel report. Any questions? All right, let's do roll call. Sandra Bradford. Yes. Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's move into our action items. The first action item, do we have a motion for consideration to approve the revised 2021 to 2023 Board Meeting Calendar?
Second.
Okay, in this revision, we are revising only one board date. Our meeting in August would move from the 9th to the 16th. Based on your all's feedback, we'll have more board members present, actually, on the 16th. So, that's why we brought it forward for motion here.
There was a survey question about the October date. Did that get moved?
The October date, the attendance didn't change. We didn't get more board members if we moved that date. I'll just point out, it is on a holiday. So, if we do wanna move that date, we can bring it forward at another time. I wanted to make sure we got this one done. But we would have the same, remind me, we have the same board member attendance, even if we move that one. So, if you guys feel strongly, we can bring it forward in the next meeting.
I think it's probably a good idea to try to avoid holidays for all holidays if we can. I know it's difficult, and we try to plan this a year in advance, so the community knows when our meetings are, and we try to keep them on the same page, so people know when they are. But maybe we should revisit that and see if there's a different option.
I usually think it's a precedent. I don't think you wanna be having board business on a, you know, in respect to, in fact, that's a Jewish holiday, so that's why I wanted to change the date.
So, we already put another date out there, right? It was the, was the third or the, so we'll look, we'll take a look at that, and we can bring it forward for approval at the next meeting or the meeting following, if everybody's okay with that. Okay? I wanna look at, yet a third date.
Yeah, no.
Just stick to one of the dates we already have, that we would have the same number of board members in attendance.
And maybe we plan for the next year earlier, or look at it.
Well, if there's more on this calendar, then please let us know. Let's do a roll call, then. Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the access control and security camera proposal?
Second.
The memo is pretty thorough. Do you wanna review any?
The memo from Dr. Bynes describes, it's the camera and security work that is aligned with the work in Bill 220, and we're.
Just wondering, was it purposeful that we didn't get a lot of details? Are we trying to keep that, okay? It was kind of the impression, okay.
There were also lots of extra clauses. Is that because it involves cameras? I don't remember those kind of clauses in other contracts, where people are doing work on our buildings.
Extra clauses?
At the end, about like employee standards and things, like that they were, I don't remember.
That actually, right, actually, all, all those certificates and things, that, those are standard on bids. Although this was done as an RFP, I included the same kind of stuff because I expect that partners that we'll have will comply with the same kinds of things. And I just attach those on for the board to know that we're treating them the same way we would for other partners that we would have, with expectations that they'll comply with a lot of the law, with all the laws that are out there.
But not just a lot of them.
Yeah, no, not a lot of them, all of them, actually. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Usually, my catch-all on all the documents I put out, you'll comply with all state, federal, local rules and regulations and laws, just in case.
Other questions? All right, let's do a roll call. Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the eight board policies? I can read them off.
No, move.
We covered them in the last meeting. Do we have any follow-up that anybody wants to go through?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Community did a great job.
Yes. They're, they're prepared for the next bulk coming through. Let's see, I did not have them all pulled up. Let me read the policy names and numbers. You can check to make sure I got them all, if you would, please. So, we have Board Policy 2:260, Uniform Grievance Procedure. We have Board Policy 5:10, Equal Employment Opportunity in Minority Recruitment. Board Policy 5:20, Workplace Harassment Prohibited. Board Policy 9, 5:90, Abused and Neglected Child Reporting. Board Policy 5:220 on Substitute Teachers. Board Policy 5:250, Leaves of Absence. Board Policy 6:15, School Accountability. And Board Policy 8:180, Supplemental Instructional Programs. Take them all?
6:180.
Last one. 6:180. Did I say that wrong? Okay, Supplemental Instructional Program. Any discussion or questions on those?
I think you just got a motion. Did you get a second?
I did.
Katie, you're so quiet. Thank you for double checking.
Sorry.
That was good. All right, so, roll call. Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have an approval, or a motion for, to approve the 2023 to 2024 Academic Calendar?
No move.
Second.
It's hard to think ahead. We can't be approving '23, '24.
It was a year from.
Yeah, a year from now. Been through Calendar Committee, which Teresa oversees that committee and works with that committee. So, the recommendation is to approve the calendar as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I have a minor question. The pupil attendance days, that's, that's a state mandated number, correct?
Correct.
So, just by, so, the only reason I'm asking is because I'm looking at when this school year ends relative to our current school year. It's about three days different, but I'm assuming it's just based on how holidays fall, and therefore, okay.
Yeah, and it's a leap year.
And it's a leap year.
Yep.
And Good Friday overlaps spring break instead of being a separate day off.
Got it.
We have extra days that way.
Good catch.
So, the PTO Presidents had a question about this. They thought that the dots with the circles on top of the other shades and colors was confusing, and suggested maybe making it more clear. But that doesn't really affect the days and what they are, so.
Correct. Sam and I talked about possibly creating a more visual, appealing calendar in the future, so that's our hope.
Thank you for doing that, because the institute days overlapping with the students days off was confusing to them, so.
Yeah, and how persistent how they're held.
Yeah.
Should we do a roll call? Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the BHS Athletic Program Donation Agreements as presented?
Second.
Can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. So, a couple of months ago, Dr. Wickelman presented to the Board of Education, and we recognize the group known as Friends of the Field. They have worked tremendously hard to bring to fruition a number of donations to help enhance what we're doing at Fields of Dreams. Certainly appreciate Dr. Wickelman's hard work, and appreciate the work of this group, and, because I think these are really gonna make the experience at Fields of Dreams just that much better. So, obviously, we always appreciate the support of the community with the funding, the referendum, and the work that's going in. But to, you know, have community members step forward and enhance it to improve that experience is something special about Barrington. So, we thank them for their contributions, and recommend approval of all of these agreements.
Any comments or questions?
We're really thankful. The answer here, we're very thankful to the people donating and the organizations donating. It's pretty amazing and exciting.
Very, very generous.
Yes.
So, thank you very much, Craig, and everyone that was able to contribute. Over $1 million we're approving contracts for, so.
Very awesome.
Very awesome, very awesome. I'm really looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. Okay, let's do a roll call. Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So, next, we have a discussion that you've already rooted to, so we're gonna wait for the Secretary of Labor to come forward.
Three forward.
Excellent. I'm guessing we should all pull out our learner profile paper.
There's a quiz at the end. He never panics. Never panics. We are very excited to present to you a draft, and I wanna highlight the word "draft" of the work that is in front of you. In a minute, we'll have Dr. Byrne talk a little bit through the process in which we have, we went through to get this draft to you tonight, and some of the work that, and Dr. Philo will share some of the work that we did at the summit to get additional feedback. And then, at the end, we'll look to the board to provide their thoughts on, you know, the work that's been done thus far. Just a reminder, we presented an overview of the Vision, Vision 2020, and it really started with a conversation about what do we want the graduate in 2020 to look like? And that was the, kind of the, the starting point for that plan. So, we're taking a similar approach with this process, and really developing what we're calling the learner profile. So, if you look at other districts, you'll, you could Google "profile of a graduate." It's that idea of what do we wanna see in terms of skill development by the end? What is our North Star in terms of what we hope to accomplish and embed within our students as they go on to be successful? I personally like to call it a learner profile, because I think this is comprehensive across PK 12, the things that we're trying to instill in our students. Often, when you throw in the word "graduate," the elementary folks say, "Okay, that's, that's a high school problem. It's not, not to me." So, our. So our profile of the learner that we're sharing with you tonight really is kind of the foundation of what we hope to attain skills and competencies we hope our students attain as they move through our school district. I address a comment that was made earlier. This isn't really about adding anything to what we do as a school district. What this process thus far has been about is working with community leaders, private sector employees, our staff, and identify the skills that we believe and competencies that we believe that we need to develop in young people so they can be successful in their post-secondary endeavors. And that process, we'll talk through here in a minute. But it has led us to the product that you see in front of us, and, go ahead, Matt. This is really kind of the skills and the mindsets that we came up with, with feedback from a variety of individuals that we hope to develop in our students. And a lot of times, when you start talking about something different or new, it's where is this going to add on to the plate? And quite honestly, this isn't an additional something to the plate. We have rigorous curriculum, we have standards that we have to teach. Our teachers do a good job every single day of making teaching decisions and how they design lessons that put students in situations that develop skills. So by articulating this, it's really a prioritizing, these are the skills we want to develop in our young people. So we can work with our staff, and when we have conversations about lesson design, we can think, how do we develop more opportunities for our students to collaborate? How do we provide additional opportunities for students to communicate effectively? These are, these are items you can measure, and that will be part of this process going forward because it's important that we gauge where we're going. We also believe if you integrate these two things together, you're going to create a deeper learning opportunity for our students. And again, I just want to be clear, this isn't a new curriculum, this isn't something in addition to. It's really defining the skills we hope to develop in our young people, using the standards and the rigor that we have to plan around it to help develop these skills.
So on April 12th, we did have a specific day-long workshop where we focused on the learner profile. And as Dr. Hunt mentioned, we did have leaders from our school district, teachers and staff from elementary, middle, and high school. We had community members, we had our board members with Sandra and Angela participated in the activities that day where we really used different resources to help inform those conversations, such as. We also took a look at the feedback provided by our community, which included information from an academic, a social-emotional learning, and a future-focused audience that we reviewed, and worked through a series of workshop activities in order to develop a recommendation of personal success skills. And that then moved forward to our competency-based advisory team.
Thank you. So with our competency-based advisory team, which includes representation from our early childhood center through our transition program, we took a deep dive into the recommendations from the district learner profile team and the skills that they recommended based on the large set of community feedback, and also looked at the skills and competencies that are already. Already present within our building. So we took a look at our middle school learner dispositions alongside our elementary STEM and report card success skills to see what natural overlaps there were. Because at the end of our learner profile development, we want to ensure that we have the right skills that we are going to move forward so that we don't have multiple sets of different skills depending on the level you're in, elementary, middle school, or high school. We want one set of personal success skills, which will go along with our rigorous content and academic success skills to make a well-rounded educational experience for all of our learners. So with that analysis and a great discussion on defining what these mean in terms of not only definitions, but in terms of proficiency, the competency-based advisory team recommended six final personal success skills, which are collaborates, empathizes, thinks critically, and solves problems, communicates effectively, creates, and then advocates for self and others. So the team has gone through a process of defining what each of these means based on resources that we have available, such as the Illinois Essential Employability Skills, which were created as an outcome of the Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act, where the state looked at extensive feedback from industry professionals and labor market data that are giving schools feedback on what the skills are that our students need now so that they're successful in their future employability. And we continually hear that we can continue to teach content, and we should, but what employers are having a really hard time doing is finding folks who can collaborate and create, and those are the skills that we need to be teaching in addition to the content.
With the personal success skills drafted and the definitions drafted, we also worked back during the day when we were talking about the competency-based skills. We talked about different visuals, and we showed the people who were participating a variety of different visuals, and they gave us feedback on what they liked about them, what they didn't like about them. And we worked with our amazing graphic designer here in Barrington 220, Annie Louie Zee, along with Samantha. And we came up with six different designs, two primary designs, each design had three different iterations. And what you're looking at on the big screen now are the two primary designs. And these would be the three different iterations. So if you look down the column, you'll notice that the top one has the least amount of information. Option B has just a definition, and then option C has the definition and additional information. And at the summit, we put this in front of all of the people who attended and asked for their opinion on which design and which option they liked the best. And from that discussion and that activity, we came up with that the vast majority of people liked Design 2 the best. And looking at all the different options, they liked the option B, the middle option, where it just had the definition, the best. And this was the first part of the, of the activity where we, where we had people tell us what they liked about the visual. We also had them comment on the definitions themselves. And we are still going through all of that data, and we will be able to come back with that, with some recommendations as to how we might want to improve the definitions of all of these. But ultimately, this was the, the design that the majority of people preferred. And you'll notice that it is the hexagonal design with the single definition. We feel like this is going to be a great graphic to move forward with, to be able to use in a variety of contexts.
So we're not presenting you a final learner profile this evening. What we're, we wanted to do is update you on the work that has been done. We talked about taking the work of the summit out on the road a little bit and getting feedback. We'll bring the profile of the learner with us along the way. But we certainly would be, would like to open it up for any kind of board feedback or thoughts. You know, specific to this in terms of, you know, where it goes. We talked about using lessons and designing lessons around content that can promote these skills. This can go as far as where you're actually having dialogue and conversations with parents about these things. I use the example at the summit that one of my best conferences was with my daughter. We got through the benchmark and how she's doing in reading and writing. And we got to the end, and she said, you know, teacher said, can I have one more minute? And she started talking about Emmy, oh, sorry, Emmy. Started talking about how she interacted and played with others and how as long as they chose the game that she chose, she was all in. But when a different game was selected by someone else, she maybe wasn't as cooperative. So I look at this, and I look at the definition of empathy. And it was one of the best moments for me to go home and have a conversation with, with her about this issue. So I, I think developing the connection where we're having these conversations about these skills, both with teachers, with parents, really will benefit our students moving forward in terms of integrating these skills into the conversation. And also, this kind of serves as the North Star, that this is where, where we want to go and what we want to develop. It will help us even in decision-making processes about the programs and the things that we want to bring into Barrington 220. So open it up for feedback tonight, and it's not a, give it to us tonight, or you'll never have another opportunity. But wanted to get this in front of you, get some initial feedback, and we'll, we'll continue to have conversations as we go forward.
Well, I think this is fantastic, and this isn't necessarily, it was just something that I learned at the, was it the summit that was the first one?
I learned it.
Leader of Profile first meeting. Because we talked about collaboration a lot, that was like one of the first things that we put on our board. And there was a teacher sitting at our table that was, you know, she said, collaboration is very important, but, you know, she kind of framed it in like terms of adaptability because during the pandemic, collaboration wasn't necessarily an available resource to, you know, all kids. And so the ability to adapt between collaborating and working independently. And I'm not like trying to put, you know, whatever, my stamp on any of this or, but I just think, I thought that was so interesting from an educator's point of view as far as, you know, watching kids. We talk at the board table all the time about being able to pivot and being able to change direction and have the skills to do that. And that maybe collaboration as a whole didn't quite encompass what all of that meant. So I just thought that was an interesting takeaway from our discussion, and I saw that collaboration was on your list, so it triggered.
Thank you.
Well, if you, and if you take this, you know, a step further, you have the definition, but then you also start to develop, what do these skills actually look like in an elementary student? What do they look like in a middle school or a high school student? And that really brings teeth to this whole process.
I was also, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I love strong verbs, and you have six of them. Not only are they strong, they're also, I think they create like a well-balanced, well-rounded person, too. Like, I think that, I think it's things that we already strive for, but it's different when you have it like written down, right? And in a cool visual like this. And so, yeah, I love this, and this is, I mean, these are things that I think are critical, not just in work, but in life, right? And being like a helpful, generous, kind human being. So I, I love these verbs. I'm wondering with the, with the definitions, how did you come, I like the definitions too, but I might have a couple grammar suggestions, which won't be a surprise to Katie because that's how our bargaining sessions always go. Is Dave and Teresa know? But, but yeah, but they look, I mean, they look great, but how, did you develop them during the session?
Yeah, so we developed them during the competency-based learning advisory team. And we used resources such as the Illinois Essential Employability Skills. The Mackenzie Future Citizens Report has a huge appendix in the back of that report for not only the definition, but defining what proficiency looks like. We had the definitions from the middle school learner dispositions work, along with the elementary STEM competencies. We used some information from the habits of mind and future-ready schools and the future of schools, and just every resource that we could think of, we brought to the table and combed through all of it to ensure that we arrived at a definition that fit our district's competency.
Well, good job editing all that down into like one phrase.
For each verb, that was.
I still have all the chart paper.
Oh, my goodness. Great, I love this.
And we have 72 suggestions from the summit as well.
And my grammar was.
Not 110, just 72? Awesome. Well, I love the graphic, too. I mean, I, I know I was able to attend with Angela to the learner profile. It was, there's been a lot of thought put into this as well. You know, I didn't think about, I remember one piece of feedback was the circle was confining. And I love the way that you, it's even implied here that it goes beyond this as well. So I'm very pleased. Thank you for taking the time to really think about it.
And some of the feedback with that as relates to the horizontal graphic is, with the horizontal graphic, some of the feedback from the summit was, it felt like there was a defined beginning.
Oh. But not in the horizontal.
Right.
Interesting.
Infinite learning here.
Building blocks to take us to wherever we need to go, wherever that learner is going to go. Yeah.
I think Dr. Hunt actually had the best analogy. He told me it looks like a stop sign, and I thought, it does. It's kind of like, stop, take a look at this.
I appreciate you clarifying, I'm trying to put together the public comment, and you clarifying that this is in addition to, obviously, we all want our children learning math, science, English, all that. And I, so I, and I, obviously, then, being a good human being. So I do feel like, though, if you don't have that explanation first, that's not on here. You know, you know, the education part of it, just the core.
Core academics?
Yes. So while it's very clear after your explanation, I'm wondering if you're just looking at it, that's, would be missing from my perspect, from a, from an outsider perspective.
Certainly, when we start to upload and utilize this, we, we can have a description and rationale, if you will, included within it.
Well, I think another thing that we talked about during the summit that I think needs to factor into this, too, and to your point, Kelly, or excuse me, Katie, is the fact that, you know, the mission statement is in flux as well. And so right now, it still holds an older version.
Yeah, that's kind of a place.
My hope is, yeah, my hope is that the newer version that we worked on will kind of cover the fact that, yes, the core fundamentals are still front and center. It's, it's the fact that these principles surround that.
So good, so let's go back, get some additional feedback. You're going to take, take it on, it's road show.
Yeah, and I gave you a hard copy to take with you. If you want to do your grammar work before you go home.
She's making corrections over here, don't you worry.
Can't imagine policy meetings.
I know what they were like before, but.
Okay.
So just a question, when you look at the district profile, the middle school success, the elementary STEM page, where you've got all those really awesome things on there, and then you kind of, you know, pare it down to the big six, are some of the things included, you know, underneath it, sort of, like, like is grit and resilience? Like resiliency and grit came up a lot in some of the feedback from the community. Is that kind of embedded in some of these things? And I know, you know, cultural competency, and is that kind of embedded in empathy?
Yeah.
Those kinds of things? Is that like how that, because there's, they're all good up in that page before, it's got, you know, all of them.
So to Angela's point, with the conversation at her table of the learner profile, talking about the difference between collaboration and adaptability. And the next step is to define what proficiency looks like. And then within each of the personal success skills, there will be sub-skills. And then as we take this to scale, we can look at what it looks like holistically. And what does this look like for a grade level band or a particular grade level? Or what it looks like in the different content areas and the tasks? So we will be able to build that out and define it more specifically as we move forward in the work.
So it's richer?
Yes.
It's just, this is a summary?
There is a lot of overlap, but we wanted to make sure that we had the most power with what the public facing learner profile is saying.
Interesting.
And it brings continuity throughout the district, that we don't have one building of competencies and, you know, something else. This, this brings priority throughout the district.
First grade will look the same everywhere as far as like, you know, collaboration or empathy. And then second grade, third grade, all the way up, we'll have, as it works its way through it in the next six months to a year of planning.
Yeah, and, and let's be clear, a lot of this is being developed, right? This is just focusing, okay, these, these are priorities. So let's, let's really think about, from a teaching and learning and from a programming perspective, how do we develop these skills?
And maybe that could be, you know, the center of the, I'm going to call it a honeycomb, I know it's not, but I think it was like it. But maybe this. See? Maybe, maybe the inner honeycomb is, you know, teaching and learning, instead of just saying framework 22. And that kind of lays out as far as, you know, the, the core curriculum kind of tenants. And, and then it doesn't require a bunch of description or lead-in, it's just kind of embedded right in the middle. But then to complement learning is, is all of these other attributes and traits that we want our learners to, you know, to possess upon graduation.
I like that, Angela, I think it's similar with the book that's there. Knowledge. Cool. Okay, any other comments?
So to clarify timeline, we said that, of all, that we had done on June 20th, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
June 20th, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. The goal right now is to bring these forward to you, what is it, is it the 20th, the June meeting?
You said the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said 21st.
21st, yeah, second meeting, Jim.
Okay, got it.
And honestly, you know, that timeline is going to be based a little bit about on, we're summarizing this feedback, we're going to take it out and get additional feedback. If for some reason that were to slow down, or we feel like we need more time, I'd come back to the board and just tell you, here's what we're hearing, and here's what I think we need to do. But also, don't think by June 21st, you're done with strategic planning, we're really only starting, right?
Right. It'll just be an update for us as a board to kind of digest.
You'll get an update before that, probably. We'll probably bring what we take from the summit to the board in draft form as well to get it in front of you prior to the 21st.
Got it.
Can I make just one last comment? This is so random, but when we were at that initial meeting and we, you know, went and looked at all of the other examples of learner profiles and the visuals, and I don't know what school district it was, but there was, you know, either like strong ethical foundation or something that, like regarding ethics. And, you know, a few people commented on it throughout the room, like, almost like, oh, my gosh, I was almost surprised to see that. And it kind of made me surprised to see it, too. But then when I thought about it later, I thought, well, why should that make any of us? Because that's, you know, our school code of conduct. Really, it's embedded in so many of these, you know, little hexagons that we that we have here, and, you know, and empathy, and, you know, advocacy, and I just thought that was such a nice kind of, to me, that's, that's like asking our learners to, like, go one step further. Like, it's not just you're, you're going to make as much money as you can, and you're going to be the best you, it's you're going to do this in an ethical way. And I'm not saying you're going to do this, but, you know, like, this is our goal. So I'm sure that that will get drilled down in this whole process, but it was one of those things that you heard kind of mutterings about, and and it kind of went home with me, too, so, so I bring it up.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great point, Angela, and I think, you know, in addition to that, I think another takeaway, Leah, correct me if you had something different at your table, but I think a good takeaway that we had from our group discussions, and I heard actually kind of resonate throughout, was that, you know, it's about having the whole student, and it's not, and it's not just, to your point, about, you know, ABCs and 1-3s, it's about developing good, quality people who, you know, embody these qualities, but in addition, just learn to do what is right, not worry about, you know, not putting, to your point, money as our top priority, or, because success can be defined in many different ways. It's not just your monetary, it's your bank account, for example. And so I think, you know, again, Leah, correct me if you heard something different or something in addition, but I think that's very much a goal of our district, and it should, and rightfully so.
There were a lot of robust discussions about a lot of things, and there was a talk, there was talk about individual success and looking at the individual children and what their, where their starting points were and where their finishing points were, and that everyone wasn't the same, and that that was important to, to.
To make them feel successful, but give them the tools to be skilled.
And just, and I, we haven't dug into it a lot, but just reviewing the data that we got back from the summit, that's loud and clear. I mean, you will see that come through.
Okay.
And there was discussion about the mission statement, you know, inspiring, is that the right word? Excellence, is that the right word? You know, there was a lot of opinions at my table about what the right word was and what wasn't the right word, and, you know, just like it's going to be at this board. We're a bunch of wordsmithers, we all know it, right?
It's empowering. We found it at our table.
We said it, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so it was different, you know, and some came up tonight about potential, you know. So there's going to be some wordsmiths going on, but I'm sure you guys will use a lot of wisdom and guide us a little bit here, so, yeah, yeah, you know. Excellent. It's good work, it's good work, it was a good summit.
Hard work.
Barrington 220 learner, 1.0.
I'm going to note that.
That's actually like 12.0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, how about agenda items for our May 17? We have some recognition. The Coaches Association, I think we've already done this on the consent, it'll be on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that will be to vote on it.
We'll get to vote on the consolidated district plan that we reviewed this, this board meeting, and then the lunch and breakfast prices will be on an action item. We'll get a discussion update on summer school enrollment and our district equity.
Looking forward to that.
Of that presentation, right?
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Anything else?
So I don't know if this is necessarily a, a topic of discussion, or if it's something that we should take offline as a closed matter, but I texted you earlier today, and Dr. Hunt as well, about potentially setting up a town hall. So today actually marks, I think, the one-year anniversary of this particular board, and I thought what would be helpful is for us to solicit feedback from the community. I don't know if it's, you know, us posting ourselves at various schools, or if it's having another meeting here where we open up to the parents and the taxpayers of the community, but I thought it'd be very helpful to have a, like I said, maybe a town hall for whether it's all seven of us or just a group of us, and we do it in segments, but having some town halls to allow for feedback and, you know, further discussion as to how we can improve as a board for our second year together.
I like that. I mean, we did that before, Sandra, where we kind of sat, I don't remember what this was about, referendum, maybe? Remember, we kind of sat out, like, not in the audience, but like, not behind a desk, and had like discussions, you know?
Yeah, it was more like an open house, kind of a.
Yeah, if we do, can it be, yeah, less formal than this?
Yeah.
Because to make it distinct from like public comment or something.
A dialogue would be nice. I agree.
Do you want to do something in addition to like an update with the strategic plan? Because I think there's a lot of positive things coming out of the strategic plan, and especially if there's some of these venues where you're going on the road, if it might be a, you know, maybe a different board members at each venue?
Yeah.
One of those, if there's that many of them?
You'll all be invited.
To all of them?
We'll, we'll have a sign up out there for you.
Because it's a lot of items.
You don't want to have multiple members, you know, with a board, you know, with the board.
Or we'll have to call meeting, I mean, if we.
My only concern would be the purpose of those are to gather feedback specific to that plan.
Right.
If you want something more general in nature, I think we should think about scheduling something different.
We've gotten a lot of feedback, too, if we're, people are. Suggestion box.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we could. I think one of the things that I I thought about, too, was perhaps allowing for a online submittal of either questions or comments.
Oh, we did that before, Facebook Live.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I mean, I, I'm really open to this, but I just think it would be good to get feedback. And I do agree with Dr. Hunt, I think this is above and beyond just the framework work. This is about what we've done this last year. And actually, at the risk of giving the administrators more work, I think what would be helpful, and I think, Leah, you're referring to this, is maybe putting together a document to show what's been done over the last 12 months, ended, you know, May 31st, to show kind of the accomplishments of the district. You know, what have we been able to do for the taxpayers and parents of this community? I think that would be helpful, because I think so often, you know, we're putting out things, and very rarely do we celebrate the victories. And I know with Dr. Harris, Dr. Hunt, you guys have done such a great job over the last 12 months, I think it would be great to put that on paper and show how aligned the goals that were set forth, you know, prior to that period of time as well.
I think it'll blow people away how much you've done, Dr. Hunt. It's kind of like a crazy year. I mean, it just hit the ground running with, you know, all sorts of things going on, and the referendum is one of them, right? Talking to the different groups, going on the road, having your focus groups.
Yeah, well, this, this team and this room and the staff has gone a ton.
Yeah.
Dr. Hunt figured out a way to get us to vote to give him a day off work. Unanimously.
Well, it's written down, didn't it?
With robust yeses.
You're welcome to join us if you want, board member for a day.
There you go.
Welcome to that all.
So I think I was bidding on that.
So just, let me, let me just, where we are, I think, and I'll speak for the team where we are right now, capacity-wise to create a document, I don't know that I can commit to. I can, with trying to turn around the summit and set these up, because I have to leverage, we have to leverage May, because when June gets here, people are gone. Yeah. I know, you know, first thing was coming to my mind, we were saying that, is the board, you know, Sam puts out a board report after every meeting, we could probably give those to the board, and we could pluck things you would like to highlight. But we have to figure venue and how you want to share that, because they're two different things, a report saying this, or an opportunity to dialogue.
Well, I think it's both, by frankly.
I was wondering if we just, you know, make it an agenda item to talk about it a little bit more, because maybe right now isn't the right time, but maybe we could prepare something or do something over the summer to do something, or something like that was one thing that.
So I was also worried about the workload, right? We've got a lot of stuff going on right now.
Well, I was just going to say, it sounds like it could be like a comprehensive version of like what Samantha does put out, kind of like an academic year-end, maybe it could be like sometime in the summer, we kind of do a thorough compilation of like, because I think sometimes people maybe pay attention to like maybe a contentious issue, and then they don't really pay attention to like things that are getting approved and like the, like core education.
An annual report is what you're.
Maybe something like that, but it doesn't have to be super fancy.
Correct. I think bullet point list is fine. I think the more important thing is to get it out there, and then, like I said, make ourselves available, you know, based on availability over the next couple of months, but make ourselves available to feedback and improvement as a board and as an administration team.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And yeah, if it's okay, Sandra, can we put it as a discussion item then?
How does everybody feel about that?
Great.
Sure.
Sure.
You see when it, when it makes the most sense.
Or people could email their thoughts to Bob, and then he might, it might be easier than all of us talking at once. I don't know. That might, might be helpful.
Let me look at the agendas.
Even include TikTok dances in the, in the.
Did I hear most newger?
First, we have to approve the confidentiality of close session minutes. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, vote call.
Angela Wilcups?
Yes.
Erin Channing?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Karam?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Barry Alchuler?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.